Good.
Anything to the captain?
Hi.
I guess I gotta get up.
I push the volume.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming today. We really appreciate that you take the time out of your busy schedules to come. And here this information to us has the Program Director and Project Coordinator of the Alden Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. This is really important data. We have worked on this for the last 12 years. We've compiled data from 2014, 2018, 2020, and 2023. And I'm really happy to say that we are seeing wonderful things in our community. And it's a collaboration of all of us coming together. I work for Horizon Health Services. I'm the Parent and Family Support Coordinator for Horizon. I'm part of the Opioid Task Force. I sit on the task force for the vaping committee. I'm part of about six different committees in the community, and I see firsthand what is happening in our communities. And we bring this information to you not to scare you, but because we don't want to see this happen with other families. We're in the worst epidemic in U.S. history, and we know there is no question that the cycle of addiction sets up during the school years. It's not going to affect everybody. I don't want you to think that I'm going to stand here and tell you that everybody who smokes marijuana or everybody who drinks alcohol is going to become addicted to it. But the honest-to-God truth is, we don't know. There is no science to who becomes addicted, who doesn't. And once addiction grabs hold, there is no going back. It's forever. And it is a progressive disease. And many of you know that I lost my son in 2021. The cycle of his addiction set up during the high school years, and it progressed over the years. And even though he worked diligently at recovery, he was an amazing young man, and he worked really hard to overcome the barriers in his life, he still didn't make it. And I see this every day. The overdose death rate in Erie County is off the charts. COVID has really impacted it. So I'm really proud of the work that we're doing here, that we are seeing an overall reduction. But there are also some big concerns. And I want to take a minute to introduce our Project Coordinator, Stephanie Potler-Bee. Our coalition, since its inception in 2013, the only person that we've really lost is Judy Baumgartner. She started the coalition with me. And we are still in contact, and she still supports us, and I support her. But the people who started this organization are still with it today. That's how passionate they are about the community that they live in. And we are truly making a difference. Renee Mertz is our Youth Ambassador Coach. She is going to talk a little bit. She started to take over in the schools with our youth ambassadors. And our youth ambassador program has gone from about six or seven kids in 2018 and '20 to over 50 students that are actively involved. And they're our voice in the community. They really make a difference. We have Rachel Hiller here, who is our social worker. And Meredith Howard is our new family resource liaison, are you called?
Yeah, Courtney. I mean, whatever you want.
Many of you don't know.
I'm the coordinator.
Many of you don't know that we have a Family Resource Center here. And I am going to tell you that as we go through this presentation, and you see the numbers, and you start to question yourself, is this something that I should be concerned with? I'm going to tell you the best chance for long-term recovery is early intervention. Once substance use starts, there's very little that we can do to stop it. We can impose consequences. We can do everything to set healthy boundaries and positive reinforcement. But the cycle can continue to grow. So take advantage of the resources that are in your community. The Family Resource Center, the people in the school, the coalition, we are all here to help you. I want to, I'm going to get really close to Stephanie here, because I have the microphone on, but I want Stephanie to say a few words about what she does and how important this is to her.
Stephanie Potler-Bee. I am the Project Coordinator. I do everything Colleen tells me to do. So I help Colleen along the way. We, you know, we put together a ton of fun events in the community, but then what people don't see us doing is all the stuff that the kids are going to talk about today, all the stuff we do on the backside of it, that's outside of our Halloween spooktacular event. And there's a lot of day-to-day things. We, you know, Colleen and I met 12 years ago, 12 years ago now, and we've been building this coalition ever since then, and it's gotten bigger than we ever could have imagined. And we've gotten way more support and way more involvement than we ever could have imagined. You know, I met Colleen when my husband's family lost their, you know, 24-year-old to a heroin overdose. And so many things have changed in that timeframe. And, you know, our main goal is to make sure that our kids, my kids, because I'm a parent in the community as well, don't have that same experience and that they know the dangers that are out there. And the way the kids know that is when the parents know that. So that's what we're here for today. And we've got an awesome group of high school students that go above and beyond our expectations. I think they're smarter than us at times, and they're going to change the world for sure.
I'd like to take a minute to have them each introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Alex Lythack. I'm one of the co-youth, co-president Youth Ambassadors.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Mertz. I'm the other co-Youth Ambassador President.
Hi, I'm Anna Rogers. That's it.
Hi, I'm Anthony Kudla. I'm the digital media liaison.
Hi, I'm Josh Bassam.
Hi, I'm Karen Renneman. I'm the Youth Ambassador.
Thank you, guys. So we're going to get on with the survey. It shouldn't take, or the PowerPoint, it shouldn't take that long. We'll open it up to a few questions at the beginning, and anybody who's interested in having it, just let me know, and we can email it to you, because it can be a little bit confusing, seeing it in such a fast momentum with increase and decrease. So, did you know the highlights from the 2023 CLYDE survey? The Community Level Youth Development Evaluation, which is called CLYDE, is a survey taken by students to learn students' behaviors or beliefs and attitudes. The survey gives the Alden Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and its partners valuable data that can be used to plan activities and events for youth. We welcome your feedback at the end of this. Today, we're going to be looking at some of the data from the 2023 CLYDE survey administered in Alden, grade 7 through 12. 499 students participated in this survey.
Youth substance use. Past 30 days substance use. 17.8% of youth said they used alcohol in the past 30 days, which was a decrease from the 25.4% in 2020. 10.8% of youth said they used marijuana in the past 30 days, which was a decrease from the 14% in 2020. 12.4% of youth said they used a vape pen with nicotine in the past 30 days. 7.5% of youth said they used a vape pen with marijuana in the past 30 days.
So you can see on the two sections, when we talk about vape pen and nicotine, and then marijuana in vape pens, we don't have data on that, because this is like just exploded in the last several years. When we did the 2020 survey, we were really kind of blown away, because that's when they were asking about marijuana use. And our marijuana use, like, dropped. It dropped so much that even the evaluator said, wow, you guys are doing a great job. But there was that little valley where we knew that kids were going from smoking marijuana to dropping THC into their vape devices. So that's why the CLYDE surveys nationally have changed, and we're starting to monitor now the vape pen use and the THC in vape pens.
What does this tell us? Past 30 days substance use among youth is trending downward in the Alden community. This is in the line with national results, showing that youth has been using fewer substances since the COVID pandemic. Trends in substance use are not all equal. For example, cannabis use is quickly changing and must be closely monitored.
66.7% of the youth said that alcohol use is a risk to health, which was a decrease from 72.2% in 2020. 57.5% of youth said that marijuana use is a risk to health, which was an increase from 54% in 2020. 76% of youth said that e-cigarette use is a risk to health, which was an increase from 66.8% in 2020. What does this tell us? Alden youth report different levels of harm for different illicit substances. Some students view substances as considerably less harmful than others. Perception of harm using certain substances, such as alcohol, has decreased.
So for the most part, this is positive news. You know, alcohol has always been the number-one concern that we have, and we can see that perceptions of harm are decreasing. Kids are not thinking that is dangerous. The perception of marijuana, I think, is increasing, because we've taken such a focal point on it. You know, it shows that the work we're doing in the schools and the community is helping to educate our peers and make healthy choices. But we have other barriers that we're starting to face.
Perception of parental disapproval of substance use. 94.3% of youth said that their parents would disapprove if they used alcohol, which was a decrease from 97.4% in 2020. 88.1% of youth said their parents would disapprove if they used marijuana, which was a decrease from 91.4% in 2020. 94.1% of youth said that their parents would disapprove if they used e-cigarettes, which was a decrease from 95.1% in 2020.
So what does this tell us? There is a high perception of parental disapproval for use of various substances among Alden youth, but that is changing. Students report different levels of parental disapproval for various substances, and perception of parental disapproval of using several substances, including alcohol and marijuana, has decreased.
So, well, actually, this is not my slide.
This is my slide. Perception of peer disapproval of substance use. 78.9% of youth said their peers would disapprove if they used alcohol, which was a decrease from 83.7% in 2020. 71% of youth said that their peers would disapprove if they used marijuana, which was a decrease from 75.9% in 2020. 71.6% of youth said their peers would disapprove if they used e-cigarettes, which was a decrease from 72.4% in 2020. What does this tell us? There is relatively high perception of peer disapproval for the use of various substances among Alden youth, but that is changing. Perception of peer disapproval is lower than perception of parental disapproval. Perception of peer disapproval of using several substances, including alcohol and marijuana, has decreased.
So obviously, this information is a bit concerning. And, you know, with the legalization and all the changes that are happening in the world, we're sending mixed messages to our youth. There's no doubt, no question at all, that substance use on an underdeveloped brain is dangerous. And we need to be diligent in educating our community so we can prevent youth substance use disorder and addiction. We have medical marijuana out there, and somewhere along this journey, we are falling into a valley where kids are thinking medical marijuana and marijuana are the same thing. We, there is no way, shape, and form that we want a youth to think because marijuana is used in the home by a parent. Whether it's used recreationally or for medicinal purposes, that's their business. Our focus is an adolescent brain. The potency of substances today has quadrupled. The THC levels in dabs are 60 to 90 times more potent than anything we have seen before. Alcohol has reached levels of 10 to 17% alcohol by volume. All these substances are putting our youth at additional risk. And again, once addiction grabs hold, there's no going back. We can't reverse the clock. You're there, and the life of an adolescent and their family can forever be changed.
Okay, so our section two is bullying and mental health. Bullying. So 13.8% of students said that they bullied someone in the past year, from a high of 21.3% in 7th grade to a low of 9.8% in 12th grade. 24.4% of students said that they were bullied on school property in the past year, and 55.3% of 7th graders said that they were bullied. Also, 20.9% of students said that they were bullied outside school property. 50% of 7th graders said that they were bullied. And 20.8% of students said that they were bullied electronically, and 53.1% of 7th graders said that they were bullied. So social media has had a huge impact on the ability to bully someone, especially through cyberbullying. So we really, you know, thinking about it, thinking about, you know, social media and how it's really a way for someone to get bullied or your child to get bullied, it's really terrible.
It's really important that you monitor your adolescents' social media. There are so many ways to access dark web information. It's simply a browser that's downloaded on a computer. Any adolescent can do it. One that comes to mind is called Fistogram. It is an access to the dark world. Bullying is a huge, huge thing. Solutions to bullying are not simple. Bullying prevention approaches that show the most promise confront the problem from many angles. They involve the entire school community, students, families, administrators, teachers, and staff, such as bus drivers, nurses, cafeteria, and front office, in creating a culture of respect. Zero tolerance and expulsion are not effective approaches. A voice, everybody having a voice and not being fearful to come and say that they're in fear, should be a culture in our community and in our school.
34.1% of students said that they sometimes think life is not worth it, from a high of 50% in 7th grade to a low of 27.6% in 10th grade. 43.9% of students said at times they feel no good at all. 15.7% of 7th graders felt this way. 28% of students said they were inclined to think they are a failure, from a high of 34.8% in 7th grade to a low of 20.4% in 10th grade. 38% of students said that they were depressed or sad on most days in the past year. 52.2% of 7th graders felt this way. What do these slides tell us? Bullying is relatively common in many settings across the community. A high percentage of students indicate one or more mental health stressors in their lives.
What can we do to help prevent this? Remember that mental health challenges are real, common, and treatable. Ask for help. Reach out to a friend in need. Build and maintain healthy relationships. Learn and practice techniques to manage stress and other difficult emotions. Take care of your body and mind, and be intentional about your use of social media, video games, and other technologies.
These are some of the resources. I just want to point out, if any of you Google, you can see that we're in the highest state of adolescent suicide than we have ever been before. Whether it's due to substance use disorder, mental health, bullying, I mean, there's a number of factors that go into play. But has a community, has the culture of the community that we live in in the school, we truly can make changes. We can talk about this every day. Early intervention is key in long-term youth recovery. Never be afraid to ask for help, ever. We're all here to help you navigate the available services. And in the last 12 years, things have really changed when it comes to services. I know it's still hard for a family member who's looking for help. You can't open a phone book and, you know, look down. But there's resources like myself. My phone is always on, as a parent and family support coordinator. There's resources like the Family Resource Center that we have here. Greg is a part of the coalition, but also an active member in the community that navigates people towards services all the time. So please, don't ever be afraid to take that first step, because, you know, every life has value, and we should all do our part to make sure that everybody feels a part of the community that we're a part of. Does anyone have any questions? If you want the survey, please just let me know. Again, I know the data. We kind of went through it fast. It is really beautiful data. Even though we talk about the decreases and the increases, I want you all to look at the bigger picture, which is 80, almost 80% of our youth are not engaging in substance use. So the 20% that we know, those have to be our focus. You know, we have to all do our part to try and help them navigate to successful lives to be able to achieve and reach their goals. So with that being said, I am going to, I was going to say put my mic down, but...
The percentages compared to the national percentage.
We're pretty much right in line. Yep. We, I can tell you, in the communities that we work with, we're a little bit lower. And I think that our numbers as a community probably jumped a little bit quicker, because we have such a huge youth involvement. And when kids are talking to kids, it's so much more impactful than an adult or an authoritarian saying, don't do that, don't do that. So, you know, kudos to these kids who are the face of the coalition, that have no fear and are not afraid of being judged, that stand up for what they feel, what they believe in, they say it out loud.
What questions, and do you have the sheets of questions regarding the bullying those kids were asked?
Yes, I do. I'm going to put that together in the survey. He sent it to me today. They're called, what did he say they were?
Cross tabs.
Cross tabs on how they filtered down that information. But even he brought to our attention the percentage of kids that are bullied in middle school, the 7th grade level. How, yeah. You know, that's, and we've, you know, we've worked very hard in the high school, and we're kind of filtering, thanks to Renee primarily, of getting into the middle school to get those kids more involved in the coalition. I know Emily over here came from St. John's, and we've had a huge impact on helping her. Her grandmother volunteers for the coalition. We really want to get younger kids actively involved, because we know if we get them before they get to that point, we have a far better chance.
And that's exactly what we're going to do with the survey data. It's not just to present it to you in this format, but you'll see the survey data throughout the year in different campaigns that we run, but also, we see that number, that bullying number in 7th grade, so now we go, okay, that's where we need to go with some of the resources we have.
And I know that there has been questions to the validity of these surveys. And, you know, nothing's going to be a perfect science, but there are measures that are taken, and he sent them to me this morning, because I said I need to be able to address this. There are measures that are taken in the survey that eliminate answers that are questionable. And 39 students were eliminated from the survey because of the way they answered their questions. So I have, you know, I work in the field, I see what's going on in day-to-day, I'm on the front lines of this epidemic. I work with youth every day. I believe everything that I'm reading in this survey. There is, you know, 20% of our youth population that is really struggling horribly. And our efforts to try and help them are getting greater, but while we're trying to help everybody, we're educating these kids who are our leaders of tomorrow, and they're going to change the world. So thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Greg. I ask him to come and say a few words about our community and how his job is going.
Good evening. I don't need that.
Yes, you do, because it's being taped.
Oh. All right. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Greg Kent, and I'm a deputy with the York County Sheriff's Office. So I patrol this area. I cover Alden, Newstead, and Clarence. So basic patrol functions, answering calls. I also try to be a presence in the school, help out the school resource officers, that type of thing. I'm involved with these guys. I seem to have been the one that's become the permanent chaperone for the DC trip every year. So I've gotten to know my way around National Harbor, Maryland. So for me, what I see on a regular basis in the community, and I also, I filled in as the school resource officer when Deputy Peel was out with her concussion and a couple other times. So I do have a little bit of a taste of what it's like to work inside the school with that. When I was filling in for her was when a lot of the marijuana laws were first getting changed, and we seemed to see a big uptick in not only the dabbing with the vape, but also with edibles. And we're seeing kids in the middle school crashing, because we had to send a couple, we called ambulance for a couple, because they were just eating these gummies, marijuana these gummies, like a whole bag, because they can get them anywhere. And so it seems like the last few years, that has dropped off. I'm not seeing nearly as many issues in the schools or with the younger kids with the edibles or the vaping dabs that we were two, three, four years ago. It is still there, but not as it was at that time. One thing that I have seen that ties in with substance abuse is the mental health issues. I've been on this job now for total, I've been in Erie County for 17 years, and in law enforcement for the better part of 18, 18 and a half years. And mental health calls have gone from probably one every two months when I started to, I don't know, two, sometimes three a week. That's probably on the conservative side. And almost every mental health call that I deal with, especially for a younger person, there's likely a substance abuse issue that's been in their past, that's affected their brain. By the time they get into their 20s and 30s, it's affected their brain so bad that they start becoming schizophrenic, and that's been, I think, a big reason for why we have some of the mental health problems that we have today, in my opinion. I don't have the numbers on that, but that's the trend that I've seen, and it seems to match up from what I've seen in my career. But in this community, overall, I think we're better off than a lot of other communities have been. Things that I handle, back in my partner in Clarence, we seem to get a lot more there. It's a bigger community, a lot more going on. But, you know, everything goes by your population size. But that's the biggest things that I have as far as what I see on a daily basis. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me as far as things in the community or things that I see just in the profession itself. This is kind of your time to pick my brain.
I will say that you're absolutely right about mental health and substance use disorder. They go hand in hand. And because of the increase in substance use disorder, the potency of the narcotics that we're seeing out on the street, and the age of onset of youth, our adolescents are developing major mental health disorders by the time they're in their early 20s. And a lot of them are succumbing to death and overdose. The average age of somebody who used heroin during Vietnam area was 48 to 52 years old. Today, it's 25 to 35, because the tolerance grows, just like always, I need more, I need more. With no intervention, that just continues to grow until one day, you're taking too much and you stop breathing. Or you go into treatment programs, in my son's case, he wasn't using, and got substances that were laced with other things, and, you know, in the blink of an eye. And just in the blink of an eye, it just, everything changed. So, you know, we have to kind of change our perceptions in the community. I know there was a time where, you know, as kids, we all did things we shouldn't have done, right? You know, we all challenged authority, you know, maybe drank after school or, you know, smoked marijuana. Kids haven't changed. They're still going to, you know, push the envelope. They're still going to try. But the substances that are available can change, change their brain the very first time that they do that. And believe me when I tell you, that changes their life and yours. Addiction is a family disease. It takes the whole family down. So I'm really proud of our partnership, our efforts. We are very blessed that we're a small community, because, you know, we have so many partners in a small community, we make, you make a much bigger impact, right? And, you know, that's what we're doing. So, you know, keep doing what you're doing, Greg.
Well, another thing I just thought, too, when you mentioned that, was we are seeing an increase in car accidents since marijuana's been legalized or decriminalized. And it's something that we've been trying to send as many people as possible to get certified for drug recognition experts, to be DREs, because people are getting away from, you know, well, can't drink and drive. That's, we've been hammering on that for decades now. But now they think, they don't think twice of getting high and then getting behind the wheel. And it's harder for us to tell when they are, and harder for us to prove that they are, so they're getting away with it more, but it is leading to more accidents. We had one guy on Transit Road who got in two car accidents within 20 minutes of each other. Got in a car accident, they cleared it, he drove away, turned the corner, and got another accident. And, but there's no way that, we didn't have a DRE that was available to come out and test him in that. We had no... him in that. We had no way of proving it. So by New York State law, we can't detain him, we can't arrest him for it. Because we can't, it's not like alcohol where we can take a breath sample on the roadside or doing sobriety tests. If we have nothing to go on with that, we have no choice. But that's, wasn't my decision to decriminalize, so...
Thank you. Rachel and Mary, do you want to speak together or separately?
Sure, pick mine.
So hi, I'm Rachel Hiller. I'm the school social worker. I work out of the high school, but I'm the only social worker in the district. So a couple of the things that I wanted to talk about were, first of all, we have a new initiative that we're tentatively starting to roll out in the high school this year, which is an alternative to suspension for vaping offenses. So we have a program, it's called In Depth. It's sponsored by the American Lung Association. It's a training that I'm certified in. And essentially, if a student gets caught with a vape pen at school, assuming that is nicotine and not something else, instead of a suspension or a consequence like that, they will have to come and meet with me. So their consequence will be four hours with the school social worker, where we will go over their cravings, why they use, you know, what situations are they using in, you know, do they need it, or do they do it when they're bored, things like that. And also, like, education on what's in the vape pen. A lot of students think that they're not as bad for you as cigarettes are, so they sort of view it as a safe alternative, but the carcinogens are still all in there. They're definitely not healthy for you or your lungs. So the idea of the program is to try to get students to the point where they're ready to quit. The program is evidence-based. About 60% of students who go through it are ready to quit at the end of it. And then we will be referring them to a program where they can go through a vaping cessation program and start to quit if they're ready. So that's something that we're rolling out in the high school. Hopefully, we'll be rolling it out in the middle school. We just have to work on the logistics. And we're excited about that because we have a lot of students who end up with a disciplinary consequence due to being caught with a vape pen throughout the day. So that's one thing. The other thing that I just wanted to mention with, you know, regards to the bullying and the mental health concerns, we do have a partnership with Horizon in the high school and middle school. So there are counselors on site twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, that are able to meet with your child during the school day. So I know transportation can be difficult for a lot of families. None of these places are close. Like, the closest place is always like Orchard Park, which is not like, you know, a hop, skip, and a jump. So we have this partnership. We can refer your child directly, and they don't have to wait on a waitlist, they don't have to go through a lengthy intake process. I make a call, I send a fax, your kid is linked, and they'll start on Tuesday. So we're really excited about that. This year, we're adding a second counselor because our first counselor last year got full up pretty quick. So we're excited that families are using it and want to make them aware that it's there. The other program that we have that's a district-wide initiative is the Ruler Project. So it's a social-emotional learning project. We're trying to increase understanding of your emotions. A lot of kids struggle just identifying how they feel from a very young age. I push into health classes every year, and I ask kids to do a fun activity where they make a fortune teller, and they have to come up with eight feeling words. And they get mad, sad, glad, and then they don't know anymore. So a lot of students just lack the vocabulary to even be able to understand how they feel, and that's where a lot of negative outcomes come. If you can't label how you're feeling, you can't deal with it. Because if you don't know what it is, you don't know where to go next. So that's an initiative that's district-wide, it's K-12, and we're hoping to build a bit more of a tolerant and understanding culture in the high school for social-emotional health and also help students find the language that they need to be able to cope. So if anyone ever has any questions, let me know.
Greg, can you just, you know, kind of what we had today come out to the school? And talk briefly about Rachel's challenge and how acts of kindness and how that impacts bullying.
Yeah, so the district brought the Rachel's Challenge to the high school. It's a nationwide initiative. Rachel was a student who was killed in the Columbine shooting. Her family, in her honor, have created this program that is intended to create a chain reaction of kindness. They go school to school with these lectures and these speeches, and they do leadership training with select students to teach them how to become sort of more compassionate and caring individuals in their community and to help build that sort of culture of acceptance and love. So we had that today in the high school and middle school. It went really, really great. A lot of students had a really positive reaction to it, and we'll be continuing to do some work with that throughout the rest of the year.
We also has a coalition celebrate Random Acts of Kindness Week, and our ambassadors do leadership events quarterly throughout the year. And it was in February, right Renee? In February, we did Random Acts of Kindness where all of the ambassadors met kids as they were coming off of the school bus and gave them little cards that told them how important they were. They were beautiful pieces of candy that had little inspirational messages in them. So, you know, little things like that can be so powerful, you know, to have somebody just give you something that says, "Hey, you matter."
Yeah, and in the high school, we have previously had a Wellness Week. It sort of went on hiatus with COVID. This year, we intend to bring it back so that it's a full week of sort of wellness-themed activities. We also push out Wellness Wednesdays throughout the high school, so little moments of sort of intentional thinking about your mental health and well-being and how to, you know, improve your lives through that. So we really try to have a full wraparound program with regards to your child's mental health, and we're always open to any ideas or suggestions anyone has.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Meredith Howard. I am the new Alden Family Center Coordinator, or liaison, whatever you want to call me. So I'm new to Alden, so I just want to take a moment to say how impressive that presentation was, and thank all you guys for putting that together. It was a lot of hard work. And, you know, I've been to a couple different school districts, and I think this is very impressive, one of the most impressive presentations I've seen. So I just want to thank you guys for that. So the Family Center, we are, well, what I want to do, I've worked in school district a few years, I have a background in mental health, I'm a social worker and art therapist. I previously worked at the Clarence Family Center, so I'm familiar with family centers and working with the families and how to support the families. You know, I wanted to come to Alden because it was a close-knit community, and I was excited to kind of get started. I've seen what the family centers have done in other school districts, you know, as it's, you know, anything from mental health resources to basic needs, food, clothing, lots of different resources there that we can help the families. So what I'm doing right now is just trying to get to know everyone. You know, I'm going to meet with PTOs, kind of get an idea of what the parents are looking for, for support. You know, I also, at some point, want to meet with the students and kind of understand what kind of support they need, whether it's tutoring after school, quiet place to do homework, you know, running groups during the school day. So I'm trying to get a feel for what everyone wants and needs, and hopefully develop some programs that are helpful. And then I have a couple flyers. If you have questions, if you don't feel like raising your hand now, if you think of something, you can always feel free to contact me. The Family Center is out of the middle school right now, but I'm going to be going to all those schools, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And then I'm going to invite Renee Mertz up just to talk a little bit about our Youth Ambassador Program. If anybody's interested, you know, get your kids involved. It gives them something to do, it helps to empower them. I don't want to take all Renee's glory.
Take all my thunder. Hi, I'm Renee Mertz. This is my 21st year at Alden, but I graduated from here, so I never left. It was very exciting for me to be able to become the student leader of the Coalition. Mackenzie started when she was a freshman, and I've had all these kiddos, so they're like my own. They've always been good leaders as freshmen, and they've stepped up to the plate, and they've done an awesome job. We have a great group of upperclassmen, and I hope that they lead the underclassmen to greatness also. We currently have 50 student ambassadors, 43 in the high school, seven in the middle school. We meet at 8:00 AM, so they're committed. They come before school to meet with me. We added SAD back into the school, so they can also, we also have advisement meetings, SAD is Students Against Destructive Decisions, and they support the events that the coalition does. Our mission is to create fun, drug-free events to encourage students to make good choices. We educate the student ambassadors on the dangers of underage drug and alcohol use in hopes that they will take the information they learn and share it with the other students. And we promote compassion and kindness. The kids do events. They are awesome. So they volunteer at all of our community events. I think that Spooktacular is the best because I have, the volleyball team is going to be princesses, I have the swim team, like, everyone's getting involved. So they love to do the community events. Spooktacular really gets the word out about the coalition, does a great job of spreading it. These kids have volunteered for years at the event, and they're awesome. They talk to their peers, they attend conferences, create PSAs, share information on social media. They do it all. They've attended the conference with Greg, so he gets to take them to Maryland, and they've had an amazing experience. They share what they've learned, and they present to the Coalition Adult Board as well as to the students.
And this is the fifth year that we have sent students to Washington for our Youth Leadership Program.
Last year, we were awarded a mini grant, or a mini conference by CADCA because we've attended so many years and brought kids there. So we were able to bring in other kids from the community and the area to give them all the conference experience, so it was a really awesome event.
We had 65 Alden youth attend that two-day conference.
That's all I got. So please get your kids involved. If your kids are already involved, get their friends involved. We have great momentum going right now, so it's always the job then to try to keep the momentum, so.
Yep. So we love the ambassadors. They're, you know, typically, they're kids that want to be leaders. They just, you know, take the ball and run with it. We has a coalition fund as much as we can of what they do. We give them the opportunity to create youth leadership program, events, four of them a year. We give them a $200 stipend, tell them to put it together, who do you want to present it to? They present to the primary school, the intermediate school, the middle school, and the high school. We're also part of Wellness Week. We have them do so much work, we also have to give them the opportunity to do the fun stuff. And Halloween Spooktacular has grown to about 4,000 people. We had come through that last year, and it is mainly run by the youth in our community. Obviously, we have adults because when you have all those kids together, you have to have some type of adult oversight. We're always looking for volunteers. It has become such a massive event that we need more help. Like I said, we have the same 20 people has the key members of our coalition since the date of inception. We get volunteers. We don't expect a youth to become an ambassador. They can get involved in the coalition at any level they want. And we don't expect community members to come to every meeting, but we do ask for your help. If you have the time, two weeks before the Spooktacular, we are out on that trail almost every day, putting up decorations, putting things together. We need oversight, we need people who like to dress up in costumes. Any support at all would be greatly appreciated. And I can promise you from our perspective that we will continue to do our part in the Alden community, as long as we have the support of the Alden community to, you know, this is a great place to live, but I think we can always make things a little bit better, right? So thank you all very much for coming today, we really appreciate it. There's information here if you would like to take anything. Meredith, you can take a bunch of stuff to put on, put in the office. These are the greatest, the little chip magnets, so I have more if you need them. Please, you know, take what you want, leave what you don't. Like us on our Facebook page, you'll be able to follow all of our events on there. And thank you again for coming, have a great evening. Did I miss something?